We'll be able to provide comments using the Zoom webinar platform. Members of the public who wish to provide testimony remotely must enter the virtual queue by clicking on the raised hand icon before the queue closes. The virtual queue will close five minutes after in-person testimony ends. Also, per section 2.6.2 A and B of the Rules of Council, speakers participating virtually may not allocate their time to other speakers. Time can only be ceded by speakers who are in the hearing room. Michael Prince will now go over the specifics of how the public can participate and give their testimony.
Thank you, Chair Modain. If you are in person, please complete a speaker slip if you wish to speak. In-person testimony will conclude before virtual testimony begins. Members of the public can join the webinar by computer, tablet, or smartphone by accessing the link, which is listed online in the preamble language of the agenda or on the Planning Commission's webpage. You may also dial 1-669-254-5252. The webinar ID is 1609440367. Please note that if you are watching online, there may be a 30-second delay. Please participate via the audio on your phone and mute your TV or computer when it is your turn to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Now take roll call as I call your name. Please indicate if you are present. Commissioner Mazari?
Present.
Commissioner Marlborough?
Present.
Commissioner Reeves?
Present.
Commissioner Renger?
Present.
Vice Chair Boomhauer?
Present.
Chair Modain is present and Commissioner Miyahara is absent. The staff members present with us today are Michael Prince, Assistant Deputy Director from Development Services; Tate Galloway, Deputy Director, City Planning; Lauren Hendrickson, Deputy City Attorney; Eric Masalgo, Senior Civil Engineer, Engineering Division, and Legislative Staff. We will now start our agenda with public comment for non-agenda items. This portion of the agenda is an opportunity for the public to make comments on planning-related items that are not on today's agenda. Any person wishing to speak will have three minutes maximum to provide testimony. If you would like to speak, please click on your raised hand icon on your screen. Richard Tracy? You'll have three minutes. Can you please turn on the mic? It's a button right in front there. Thank you.
Is that okay? Yeah. I feel I should start with an apology. I didn't realize, when I put in my application for speaking today on a non-agenda item, how important this meeting was to you all. In any event, I'm Richard Tracy. I live at 230 West Laurel Street in Bankers Hill, and I'd like to bring the commission's attention to a development across the street from where I live, at 2530 Albatross, which we, a number of my neighbors believe is... Is... Anyway, we oppose it. The particulars of the development is it's a seven-story, 15-unit, small-by-year standards development on a single city lot. And it violates the current zoning, which is RM 3-7, which that zoning specifies a 40-foot height limit. And of course, it violates also the number of units. And I guess it's called the area ratio on the development size. So, just in brief here, our main objection is the public safety aspects of this development. We don't know really the status of it currently, but we assume it's part of the... It's been... What do you call it? Been... Pre-approved based on the complete community's ideas, which we think don't apply because of the fact that it's, again, a public safety. We, in our... Just our short section of Albatross, it's bounded by Laurel and Maple Canyon. And this 100-yard system, part of Albatross has two developments. Hasn't been changed in 40 years. The development I live in, which is a 10-story condo and a 5-story condo across the street, and I believe four 2-story homes. The home that will be demoed for this at 2530 Albatross is a 2-story home, which currently is below market rate rental, we believe. So, just to... In the package I sent ahead of time, I provided the details of the development and a bird's eye of our community. And we feel that it's mainly senior population. We have probably a higher-than-normal density of population in the Bankers Hill and the Uptown area.
Thank you. Your time is up. I appreciate your comments.
I hope you'll consider it, and I'll follow up with your staff members.
Thank you. I think we have some online speakers.
We have one online speaker, Doreen Diaz. Please unmute yourself. You will have three minutes.
Hello. Good morning. I am Doreen Diaz Pesta, a resident of the Hampshire community, which this planning commission has taken no action to correct the city maps, to ensure the city maps align with the Skyline Paradise Hills community plan. There is no such community called Hampshire-Lamita, and I've spoken about this before. Second issue is that the community of Hampshire opposes the Project 1441 Woodrow Ave. I've submitted papers before, and I will submit them again. The application has blatant fraud. So assured by these developers that they write vacant lot because they know DSD and planning will not follow up. There's a house on this lot and a shed, which is bigger than most ADUs. There's a two-page letter of objections, which I've submitted. Also, Linda Lisbon Vista Heights, Project 0622368, is in Hampshire. It is not an Encanto. And this was a discretionary project that changed after the planning group approved in 2019. It changed again after this planning commission approved in 2021. You had approved deviations in the minimum lot size of 5,000, so this project could have lots down to 3,400 square feet instead of minimum 5,000. And this project changed again when it added 11 ADUs. This lot is in a very high fire zone. It's on a street that's had traffic congestion so bad, there was a murder in 2005 over traffic. And yet, this project could not build 24 homes. They had to get deviations in order to do so. So they didn't have to... According to the plan, they would have only built maximum of 15 homes. You gave them deviations. And now, on top of the 24-home deviation, this project currently under review has added 11 ADUs, bringing it up to 37 homes in a very steep area, which your DSD report of 2021 said that it was flat. Also neglected to mention Joyous Creek, three blocks away, and referred to a creek near National City. And thank you for moving the speaker. I do appreciate that.
Thank you. Are there any other online speakers? Okay. Are there any items to be continued or withdrawn? No? Is there a request to place any item on consent? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 11th, 2025?
So moved.
Okay.
In a second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. We can go to a vote on those meeting minutes? And those meeting minutes pass unanimously? Are there any directors' reports?
Yes. Thank you, Chair. The last Planning Commission hearing was held on September 11th. At the hearing, the commission heard three items: A community plan amendment initiation in Miramesa at 10120 Pacific Heights Boulevard and 10350 Barnes Canyon Road to redesignate a 6.41-acre property from Technology Park to Urban Employment Village, allowing up to 109 dwelling units per acre in the Miramesa Community Plan. The proposed amendment would also redesignate the general plan site from industrial employment to multiple use and from prime industrial land to prime industrial land flex. Another item approved by the commission was a request for an easement vacation tentative map and amendment to the Costa Verde specific plan to remove a 12.6-acre property identified for commercial retail use from the Costa Verde specific plan at 8610 Genesee Avenue. The project also proposes a new lot line configuration to increase the total number of lots from 2 to 13. The tentative map includes the vacation of access rights, slopes, and drainage easements. And finally, the commission voted to deny the appeal of the hearing officer's April 9th, 2025 decision on 11011 Toriano Road for a coastal development permit and site development permit to demolish an existing 76,694-square-foot research and development building and construct a new 152,080-square-foot research and development building with a four-level subterranean parking garage and surface parking. The 10.2-acre site is located in the IP11 Zone within the University Community Plan area. All items were approved 5 to 0 to 2 with Commissioners Reeves and Miyahara absent. And finally, in October, the Development Services Department's Technical Advisory Committee will be forming working groups for technology and inspections. Additional information will be available on the agenda for the Technical Advisory Committee meeting in October and at the meeting on the Development Services Department's website. That concludes my report.
Good morning, Chair. Tate Galloway, Deputy Director, City Planning Department, members of the Planning Commission. I just wanted to inform you, as well as the members there, people in the audience and others listening, that we are anticipating bringing the College Area Community Plan update on October 9th to Planning Commission for your recommendation to City Council. And then we also anticipate on October 16th bringing the Clermont Community Plan update to Planning Commission for your recommendation to the City Council. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any non-agenda commission comment? No? Okay, then we can start with our agenda with item number one. Staff, whenever you are ready.
Chair Modain?
Yes?
I would have to recuse on item number one. I would not participate in both our discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner, can you turn off your mic? Thank you.
Good morning, members of Planning Commission. I am Megan Carribias, a senior planner with the City Planning Department. Here with me today is Deputy Director Tate Galloway with City Planning Department. Item number one before you is a request to initiate an amendment to both the Mission Valley Community Plan and the General Plan. The requested amendment initiation to the Mission Valley Community Plan and the General Plan seeks to redesignate a 1.32-acre parcel from a community plan land use designation of right-of-way to office and visitor commercial with residential prohibited. This also includes removal from the Community Plan Implementation Overlay Zone, Specific Plan Subdistrict. Additionally, the request includes a specific plan amendment to remove the site from the Atlas Specific Plan. The proposed Community Plan Amendment Initiation for the subject site is outlawed in red and is located along Hotel Circle. The applicant for the initiation is Calthea Construction Management, LLC. The subject site is currently a vacant and undeveloped site along Hotel Circle South. The adjacent uses surrounding the site include hotels, multifamily residential, office, a golf course, and a vacant site next door. The Mission Valley Community Plan was comprehensively updated in 2019 to be consistent with the General Plan City of Villages strategy. The Community Plan identifies the area south of Interstate 8 as having a continued emphasis on office and hotel uses due to being physically separated from most of the community by Interstate 8. It also identifies the hillsides that form the edges of the valley that gives the community its unique natural setting and a district sense of place. The Atlas Specific Plan has a planned land use for the subject site as right-of-way for the reservation of the future Villa Las Cumbres and Interstate 8 interchange. The site is currently designated as right-of-way in the Mission Valley Community Plan. The initiation request is to redesignate the site to office and visitor commercial with residential prohibited, removal from the Community Plan Implementation Overlay Zone, Specific Plan Subdistrict, and remove the subject site from the Atlas Specific Plan. The subject site is within the hillside and Specific Plan CPAS subdistricts within the Community Plan. The Community Plan Amendment Initiation Request is to remove the site only from the Specific Plan Subdistrict. The subject site is ZON CO2-2, which accommodates office uses that serve as an employment center and does not allow for residential uses. The CO2-2 is used to implement the office and visitor commercial with residential prohibited land use designation. The nearest existing transit route is MTS Route 88, which provides services along Hotel Circle South and North to the O-Town Transit Center. The subject site faces Hotel Circle South, which serves as the main point of entrance to the site. Hotel Circle South and North currently operate as a two-way couplet system. Both are planned as a two-lane, one-way couplet. Riverwalk Street J is planned as a four-lane major arterial that would connect to Hotel Circle South with a bridge over Interstate 8. There is a Class 3 bicycle route along Hotel Circle South. There is also a plan to Class Bike Lane along the future Riverwalk Street J connection and a Class 4 two-way cycle track along Hotel Circle South and North. The slide before you highlights an overview of the public facilities, their locations and distance from the subject site, that are also located in neighboring community planning areas, such as Peninsula, Uptown, and Linda Vista. The Sandag data for housing and demographics shows that between the years 2010 and 2023, the number of homes in Mission Valley increased by 39% and the population increased by 45%. According to the San Diego Housing Commission, there are 731 deed-restricted homes in the Community Plan area, which accounts for 5% of the total homes within the community compared to 5% citywide. The 2025 California Tax Credit Allocation Committee Opportunity Area Map shows that the subject site is within the high resource area, which has a dense concentration of place-based opportunities, such as jobs, high-performing schools, and lower exposure to environmental hazards and pollutants. The map shows the opportunity areas by census tracts based on economic, environmental, and educational indicator scores. The Sandag Employment Forecast Data shows that from 2021 to 2022, the number of jobs in Mission Valley increased by about 24%. The subject site is within the Atlas Specific Plan in an area identified by the Specific Plan as Evelyn Terrace. The Atlas Specific Plan reserved the subject site within the Evelyn Terrace area for future dedication for off-ramps associated with the future Interstate and Villa Las Cumbres interchange, which is identified as Riverwalk Street J in the Mission Valley Community Plan. The Specific Plan does not propose development for the subject site. The Community Plan land use designation is consistent with the Specific Plan for the subject site. In 1988, per Resolution 272571, that is Attachment 11 in the packet, and a revocable offer of dedication of the 3.7-acre Evelyn Terrace site was made to the City of San Diego for the right-of-way for the future freeway interchange at Interstate 8. In 1991, per Resolution 27799, in conjunction with Parcel Map Number 16469, highlighting Attachments 12 and 13, the City Council rejected Parcel 1, Parcel 3, which is identified as the subject site, and portions of Parcel 2 and 4 marked as reserved for future streets. City staff has not found any documentation filled with the city or the County of San Diego that the city has accepted the IOD within the 25-year timeframe under state law. The Community Plan designates Riverwalk Street J as a future four-lane major street, which would connect Friars Road to Hotel Circle South. The Riverwalk Street J connection will allow... Will also facilitate a new Interstate... Will also allow a new interchange for Interstate 8. The planned street would provide pedestrian bicycle connections across Interstate 8 and the San Diego River to the planned Riverwalk Trolley Station. Hotel Circle South and North are planned as one-way couplets with cycle tracks. The Community Plan identifies the need to coordinate what Caltrans, Sandag, and property owners for implementation of Riverwalk Street J bridges, interchange, and ramps at Interstate 8. Please note that Hines, as the property owner and developer of Riverwalk, is preparing to conduct an engineering feasibility study, which includes analyzing the proposed winway couplets along Hotel Circle North and South, as well as Riverwalk Street J. The next few slides provide an overview of how the proposed Community Plan Amendment Initiation addresses the three initiation criteria in the General Plan. The proposed Community Plan Amendment Initiation to redesignate the site from right-of-way to office and visitor commercial with residential prohibited includes the removal from the Community Plan Implementation Overlay Zone, Specific Plan Subdistrict, and the request includes a Specific Plan Amendment to remove from the Atlas Specific Plan meets the necessary criteria for initiation. Under initiation criteria number one, if the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals and policies of the General Plan and Community Plan, it would encourage further intensification of employment uses and support business development and employment opportunities. Under criteria number two, if the proposed amendment provides additional public benefit, the proposed redesignation of the subject site and removal from the Atlas Specific Plan will allow for the city to work with the property owner to identify the improvements to implement the Community Plan's mobility network. This would also include implementation actions 21 and 23, which identify the need to work with property owners as part of a planned street network extension. An implementation of the Riverwalk Street J and interchange with Interstate 8 improvements identified in the Community Plan. Under criteria number three, the availability of public facilities, all necessary public services appear to be available. If the initiation is approved, an analysis of public services and facilities will be performed with the amendment's review, including but not limited to the planned street over Interstate 8 and the interchange that are identified in the Community Plan and Specific Plan. On August 6th of this year, the Mission Valley Community Group voted ten in support with one vote abstention to approve the initiation. The next few slides will address initiation issues with mobility, urban design, and land use. If the Planning Commission initiates the proposed CPI to the Mission Valley Community Plan to redesignate the site from right-of-way to office and visitor commercial with residential prohibited and to remove the site from the Community Plan, Specific Plan, Community Plan Implementation Overlay Zone, as well as remove the subject site from the Atlas Specific Plan, then staff would request the applicant to do the following. The applicant will need to evaluate whether the plan amendment could incorporate the mobility improvements identified in the Community Plan. This includes extension of Riverwalk Street J to Hotel Circle South, future Interstate 8 interchange at Hotel Circle South and Riverwalk Street J, and bicycle facilities along Hotel Circle South. The applicant would also need to evaluate how the proposed Community Plan and Specific Plan amendments would affect the mobility network. There will also need to be an evaluation of any additional environmental analysis to address changes to the mobility network. Staff has identified other initiation issues in the staff report that should be evaluated in a future amendment, which includes, under urban design, provision of amenities to public spaces and pedestrian-scale elements, the incorporation of urban and site design considerations, as well as incorporating sustainable development features and ensuring climate action consistency. Under land use, the evaluation of the proposed land use designation and zoning. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission initiate the plan amendment process to the Mission Valley Community Plan and the Atlas Specific Plan. This initiation request, if approved by the Planning Commission, would not constitute an endorsement of the plan amendment or project proposal. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? Okay, we can go on to public comment. Robin Madaffar, looks like you have people seating timed to you. There's one person who did not put their name, so I cannot add their time unless they want to come add their name.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll take however much you have and promise not to use it all.
Mo Samo?
Samick.
Samick? Okay. Kyle Alderman? You'll have six minutes.
Great. Thank you. My name is Robin Madaffar with offices at 1625th Avenue. My first time in the Edric. I think he would be both proud and humbled. And it's also nice to see so many familiar faces in the wild. We have a PowerPoint? I don't want to be repetitive with Megan's very thorough staff report, so this will be brief. I represent the property owner. Mike Calthea is here in the audience. And we are requesting the initiation of a plan amendment for this site on Hotel Circle South. It is not designated in the Community Plan. It is essentially white-holed. However, it is ZON CO2-2. We are proposing the designation be office and visitor commercial. That would be consistent with the surrounding properties, as well as the zone. We're also requesting removal from the Atlas Specific Plan because the IOD that was granted... Next slide. Keep going. One more. It is ZON CO2-2. Here's the zoning map. Next slide. We are requesting removal from the Atlas Specific Plan, which does have the indication that it be reserved or a portion of it be reserved for right-of-way. Next slide. Street J has been in the map for a very long time. It has not been built. The IOD on this property, as well as others in Evelyn Terrace, was granted back in, I think it was 88. That's what Megan said. It expired in 2016 because the city never accepted it. Nevertheless, other properties that have IODs on them that are also probably expired have been allowed to develop, but this property has not. Next slide. I won't go through all of these because Megan did a great job. This is all the criteria for initiation of a plan amendment. Next slide. Like I said, we are proposing this be changed from white to that purple color, which is the office and visitor commercial. Next slide. And I took the liberty of crafting a motion if you're so inclined. We're also here to answer questions.
Thank you. Craig Benedetto? You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Craig Benedetto, I'm here representing Hines, the developers of the Riverwalk community in Mission Valley. On behalf of Hines, I'm speaking today to ask that Riverwalk's team be included in the discussions going forward if the initiation is approved. This initiation occurs as we've been in discussions with the Development Services Department on basically analyzing street This initiation occurs as we've been in discussions with the Development Services Department on uh, basically analyzing Street J. As many of you who were here at the time when Riverwalk went through its hearing process, you'll recall this was a very strong topic of conversation, Western Mission Valley circulation and Street J. As our letter indicated that was submitted yesterday, and I apologize for the lateness of that. We became aware of this a bit late. It's unclear how this initiation would relate to or potentially conflict with the Mission Valley Community Plan infrastructure elements in that area, as well as the development agreement requirements for Riverwalk to analyze and construct the infrastructure that would end on the piece of property that is the subject of today's action. To be clear, we are not opposed to the initiation. We are speaking today to bring this to your attention and to make sure Riverwalk is included in these conversations going forward. Specifically, any traffic analysis necessary to support findings for a community plan amendment, as this has implications that extend beyond the subject property. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any online speakers? No? Okay, we can move on to commission comment. Vice Chair Boomhauer.
Uh, thank you, Chair Modan. So, I I I don't know that I'm opposed to the initiation. I've just got real concerns about the fact be- because I was here when Riverwalk was was approved and that development agreement was approved. Um, and I do remember that Street J was a critical part of that. There was a lot of concern about making sure that that was incorporated, and it seems like what what this does effectively and 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 this is part of my personal conflict. I totally understand this. Normally, I'm all on board for giving a property owner the right to do what they want to on their property, but this was specifically carved out. Whether the city exercised the I O D or not, as future right-of-way space, and I think if we initiate this, I need to understand how, I I know economically changing the zoning from right-of-way where you can't do anything to anything else makes the property more valuable for the property owner. But I don't understand how this is going to be analyzed by the planning department and then ultimately by D S D to to really understand how this would be impacted, how it would impact the Riverwalk development or their obligations under that development agreement, because it seems like that development agreement hinges on there being the ability to land a bridge in this location. And yes, money will have to change hands for that, but but a lot more money would seem to change hands if if we allow this to move through the past the initiation and and actually allow for this to happen, you know, get approved at some point in the future. So I'm just not understanding how planning is analyzing that.
So I assume that's a question for me.
Yeah.
So, a very good question. I I certainly, first of all, let me say I don't disagree with you. This is an important connection in the community plan, and obviously this was a a a very long time issue that came up with Atlas specific plan. It was in the prior community plan as well as uh, discussions with the Riverwalk specific plan and um, staff. We certainly uh, support and and agree that uh, um, we believe this connection is an important connection um, for providing multimodal connections uh, directly to a future trolley station within Riverwalk, as well as supporting um, multimodal uh, mobility within uh, this portion of the Mission Valley Community Plan. Um, and previously, we were certainly under the understanding that there was an I O D in place and you know, through this process have done research and uh, determined based upon this research that the I O D, um, the city has not accepted that. That said, however, we do believe that this process um, would provide the applicant the ability to demonstrate working with Heinz going forward. We'd certainly recommend that and encourage that. Um, how any proposed development of this property could be done in conjunction with the future improvements that are identified in the community plan. Um, as Megan pointed out, this doesn't endorse any future action in terms of a community plan amendment um, to redesignate the site or remove it from the specific plan. Um, we nor does that any project coming forward. Um, we certainly would look to the applicant to provide uh, analysis showing how the site could be incorporated with any proposed development. And if it could not be, what would be the impacts to the circulation system for the Mission Valley Community Plan, um, as well as any potential environmental issues that would need to be addressed. Um, that's something that we would ask that the as part of the the application going forward, if this is approved, that the applicant would address that, and uh, we would look at that as long, as well as with Development Services staff, again, to see how that would affect the community plan and and circulation system.
Okay, thank you. So then I'll flip it over to the city attorney's office. If if we were to allow this process to move forward, starting today, and if the property owner and Heinz were not able to come to an agreement, how then would the city be able to enforce Heinz's development agreement obligations? Because the private property owner can't take the property through eminent domain. The city doesn't have an obligation to put this in, so I'm just, I again, I'm trying to just think way past this initiation, because I think this is a much more complex issue than than is being presented by the applicant in the initiation request.
Sure. So I'll answer that to the extent that I can. Um, this initiation, it is a limited decision and process as uh, Mr. Galloway discussed. Um, it's not an approval or denial of the amendment. Um, it allows for the city to potentially deny an application for amendment if it's inconsistent with the major goals and policies of the general plan. The planning commission also has opportunity right now to advise city staff um, to evaluate specific facts during the processing of the initiation, and that is certainly something that we could work with city staff on moving forward. Um, if this process is initiated today, um, I'm sure that is a question that we would be working closely with um, with D S D and city planning on as this would move forward.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't have any further comments at this time.
Okay. Any other commissioners? No? Um, I'm supportive of of the initiation, um, so I can make a motion to um, uh, approve staff staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We can go to a vote.
Actually, Chair Kedaff for a friendly amendment.
Sure.
Could we sta- staff has listed the issues that they're saying they would propose evaluating, but can we make sure that included in that is like specifically the evaluation of the mobility improvements related to the community plan are being studied?
Sure. So the motion would be to approve staff's recommendation with um, an amendment that there's a focus on the transportation evaluation, the community plan.
Yes.
Okay. I can, I'll revise my motion. Are you okay with that? A second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. We can go to vote. And that passes unanimously. We can go on to item number two. Staff, whenever you're ready and set up. I do, I do want to mention that um, due to the volume of speakers slips that we have here and the attendees online, we're going to um, limit the public comment to one minute.
Good morning. Before I begin the presentation, for those of you participating virtually, please see the information on the screen for how to participate online. Please note that this information can also be found at the City of San Diego Planning Commission homepage, san diego dot G O V, Planning Commission. Um, it can be found also with any search engine online. Apologies, hold on. All right, let me try this again. Before I begin the presentation, for those of you participating virtually, please see the information on screen for how to participate online. Please note that this information can also be found at the City of San Diego Planning Commission homepage, san diego dot G O V, Planning Commission. Thank you. Good morning, Planning Commission and members of the public. I'm Martha Blake, the Development Project Manager for the Midway Rising Project before you today. The Midway Rising Project proposes the redevelopment of the site commonly referred to as the Sports Arena. The project proposes to construct four thousand two hundred and fifty-four dwelling units, two thousand of which would be affordable units, a sixteen thousand-seat entertainment center to replace the existing sports arena, fourteen point five four acres of parks and public space, and one hundred and thirty thousand square feet of commercial and retail space. There are several approvals required for the project, including a general plan and community plan amendment, the adoption of a specific plan, a rezone, amendments to chapters five and thirteen of the San Diego Municipal Code, a development agreement, a site development permit, a vesting tentative map, and easement vacations. The forty-nine point two-three acre project site is located at thirty-five hundred Sports Arena Boulevard, along with other address parcels within the Midway Pacific Highway Community Plan area. There are a number of existing uses on the site, including, of course, the sports arena. There are restaurants, a gas station, and other commercial uses, including a swap meet on the weekends. The site is surrounded by industrial, commercial, and retail uses. The site is currently designated as community commercial residential in the Midway Pacific Highway Plan, which allows for up to forty-four dwelling units per acre, or two thousand one hundred and sixty-six units. The site is subject to a community plan implementation overlay zone, also known as C P O S, type B, and is identified as part of the Sports Arena Community Village. The community plan amendment would revise the land use designation from community commercial to community village. The allowable density would increase to allow up to seventy-two dwelling units per acre. The C P O S is proposed to be replaced over the project site and the mobility, or I'm sorry, repealed over the project site, and the mobility network would be updated to reflect the design of the specific plan. The plan would also be amended to reflect the recreational value point standards for the parks and recreation inventory. Lastly, the plan would be updated to include a discussion to reflect the historic designation of the San Diego Sports Arena, which was not a designated resource at the time the community plan was updated. With the adoption of the Midway Pacific Highway Community Plan, the site was anticipated to be a community village. One option to develop the specifics for the site included the adoption of the specific plan, which is one of the actions before you today. The proposed community village would consist of a mixed-use village with up to forty-two hundred fifty-four dwelling units, a pedestrian and transit-oriented entertainment destination, new street, pedestrian, and bicycle networks to create a walkable development with improved north-to-south access, including two new public streets that cross the site, and a mix of housing opportunities, including affordable homes along with a new entertainment center. I want to highlight some of the mobility framework. Currently, there are no streets through the project site. Two new streets are proposed. On the west, Kemper Street would be extended north to Kurt Street, and in the center of the site, Frontier Street would be built. Frontier Street is planned where there is an existing signalized entrance to the parking lots for both the sports arena and the retail center on the south side of Sports Arena Boulevard. Some other improvements include making Kurt's a two-way, two-lane collector street between Hancock and Sherman Street, with a roundabout proposed at the intersection of Hancock and Kurt's. As previously noted, there will be two new public streets, as well as internal and bicycle pedestrian access through the project site as shown here. The bicycle network will include both a class one and class four bicycle facility along the frontage of the site on Sports Arena. Additional class one and class four facilities are located throughout and across the site as shown on this slide. Along Sports Arena Boulevard, one new local bus stop is proposed just west of Kemper Street. Two existing bus stops will be relocated. The eastern local stop would be relocated farther west on Sports Arena, and the middle stop will be slightly relocated and enhanced to a rapid bus stop. Fourteen point five four acres of parks and public space are proposed throughout the site. Eight point twelve acres would be park space, which would be two parks, and we would be developed in consistency with the Parks Master Plan. The public spaces include promenades, streetscapes, and the residential buffer areas. There are two general phases for development for the project. The first phase focuses on development on the east portion of the site, shown here in orange. That phase will include the construction of the new entertainment center. The existing sports arena will remain in operation until the new center opens. Once that phase is complete, demolition of the existing sports arena would start, and development on the western portion of the site, shown here in peach, could proceed. A rezone is proposed from the existing community commercial, C C three-six, to a residential mixed-use zone, R M X two. The R M X zone will allow for a mix of uses with a focus on residential uses. The project also proposes two amendments to the San Diego Municipal Code. The first would amend chapter five to create a new Midway Entertainment District that provides regulations for what is allowed and what is prohibited within the boundaries of the district. The second amendment would be to chapter thirteen and would remove the existing community plan implementation overlay zone from the project site. A development agreement is proposed for the project. The benefit to the development team would be a level of certainty in development rules for a term of thirty years. The public will benefit by the developer providing public benefits in excess of what will be obtained under existing regulations. Some of the extraordinary benefits include nine hundred and thirty-six affordable units in excess of the surplus land act requirement, a new multipurpose sixteen thousand square feet, or I'm sorry, sixteen thousand-seat entertainment center, which will be built to current standards, including accessibility standards, the development and maintenance of fourteen and a half acres of parks and public spaces, and mobility infrastructure improvements. In addition, a payment of an ad hoc fee above the standard development impact fee of up to two and a half million dollars that would be directed to help facilitate upgrades to Fire Station twenty is another one of the extraordinary benefits. In total, the value of the extraordinary public benefits is one point two billion dollars. Additional actions for the project include a site development permit, which is required as the project proposes to demolish the sports arena, which is a designated historic resource. Mitigation and project conditions are required, which will reduce some, but not all of the impacts related to this demolition. As required, the site development permit and permit findings were presented to the city's Historic Resources Board in July of this year. The board recommended on consent to approve the item with no modifications. The project also proposes to vacate several easements. Two easements would be vacated, and it would quit to claim several other easements. The most significant of these vacations is on the northwest portion of the site and has an, which has an existing public storm drain. That storm drain will be relocated prior to the acceptance of the vacation, so there will be no loss of necessary public utilities. The project also includes a vesting tentative map, which will subdivide the existing property into forty-three lots to provide orderly redevelopment of the site. As noted on the slide, there will be eleven residential, twelve mixed-use, eight public space, two public park, eight private lots, and two lots for the new entertainment center. A subsequent environmental impact report was prepared for the project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. The document is tiered from the twenty eighteen Midway Pacific Highway Community Plan Update A I R. The document analyzed several environmental issue areas and concluded that based on this analysis, the project would result in significant but mitigated impacts to most issue areas. However, significant and unmitigated, unmitigated impacts to land use, transportation, and circulation transportation and circulation, historical and tribal cultural resources, and noise will remain. Therefore, sequa findings and a statement of overriding considerations have been prepared for this project. On July 16, 2025, the Midway Pacific Highway Community Planning Group voted seven to zero to one to recommend approval of the project with no conditions. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend city council certify, adopt, or approve all actions required for this project as listed on this slide and as summarized in the report to the Planning Commission. This concludes staff's presentation. I have staff, both in person and online, from a number of city departments available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? No? Okay, we can go on to public comment. I'll start with the applicant's presentation. You have 15 people seating time to you. I need to make sure they're all in person. Shelby Jordan II.
Here.
Diego Velasco. Mike Hanson. Charles Schmidt. Sherri Hoffman. Amy Ristelli. Diane Sandman. Kelsey Hawkins. Kim Miller. Bo Peterson. Greg Shannon. Ryan Harrell. Heather Riley. Jeff Meyer. Edgar Torres. Okay, you'll have 15 minutes, Shelby.
Great, thank you, and good morning to everyone. I believe we have a presentation as well?
Can we reset his timer too? Thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Good morning, and thank you for having us here today. Again, my name is Shelby Jordan II. I'm part of the Midway Rising Development Team. Again, thank you to the Planning Commission, as well as to city staff for having us here today. While I'm speaking on behalf of the Midway Rising Team, our whole team here is here, present, ready to answer questions, along with the balance of our project team. So with that, next slide, please. Awesome. So my presentation will touch on some of the items that Martha just spoke to, but do want to acknowledge that this project is, has a lot of history that has preceded it. A tremendous amount of milestones that have taken place that really began as the genesis with the Midway Pacific Highway Community Planning Group getting together and adopting a new plan back in 2018. Since then, there's been numerous milestones that we've been able to achieve as a project team that have brought us here to you today to present the project to you. Next slide. An aerial of the site, the Sports Arena site, that the Midway Rising project is proposed on, which Martha just spoke to a little bit ago. The other thing that we want to note, not only is this, you know, roughly 49 acres includes the Sports Arena, but the various commercial developments around it. There's some rich history associated with the, not only the arena, but also with the site that we're looking forward to acknowledging as we move forward in this process with the development. Next slide, please. So the genesis for why we're here today really goes back to the community planning group's efforts, and really want to acknowledge what they did back in 2018 in adopting the community plan update for the entire Midway Pacific area. What they contemplated, which Martha spoke to, was an update for the Sports Arena Community Village that envisioned entertainment, residential, commercial, and more importantly, park space. And in order to move that vision forward, it requires us coming before you today to start that process for moving forward with the specific plan and the other documents that Martha referred to. Next slide, please. As part of this journey that we've been on for almost two and a half-plus years, we've had the opportunity also engage with the public through various presentations, as well as community workshops that we conducted in every council district, various updates to city council as well. We're very proud to have gone through that effort. It not only allowed us to share our vision with the citizens here in San Diego, but also listen to the feedback that they provided on what we were proposing. Next slide, please. And that has all led to what we are presenting to you today, the Midway Rising Development. Next slide. That vision, really four key cornerstones, which have been discussed with you already today, proposing a new entertainment center of roughly 16,000 seats, residential units totaling over 4,200, and roughly over 14 acres of parks and over 130,000 square feet of retail and commercial space. The key element to making all this work is the affordable housing component, which we're very excited to bring forth the vision of over 2,000 affordable units on this site. Really exciting on the fact that this is going to be one of the largest developments of this kind in the state's history, and the opportunity to integrate that with market rate housing as well, to create a thriving community for all. In delivering on that housing, it's not just about building it. It's more importantly about providing the services and resources for individuals that will be living there, whether they are veterans, seniors, or individuals that have experienced homelessness. This is a view of one of the Paseo Greenways, one of the many park spaces and green spaces that we are developing throughout the project. These are individual type of park spaces that basically will be located in between residential and mixed-use buildings that the members of the public, as well as the residents there at Midway Rising, will be able to enjoy. The other key component is creating a new entertainment center, which we're very excited to bring forth that vision. That vision not only provides for a new home for the San Diego Goals and the San Diego Seals, but it also provides for an elevated experience for San Diegans to enjoy quality entertainment, as well as to attract that quality entertainment, moving a 60-year-old-plus building forward into the future to allow artists, promoters, and crews to be very excited about coming to the San Diego region. This is a view of that proposed 16,000-seat entertainment center, as well as what we call the square, which is roughly over a two-acre park space that can be used not only in conjunction with the activities and the entertainment there at the entertainment center, but as a standalone venue and event space to program for the public to enjoy 365 days of the year. This is a view of the plaza, an east-west spine that connects the development. The plaza will be lined with multiple retail outlets that are more entertainment-focused as you are moving from the east side of the site to the west side. And again, another view of the project noting the various green and open space that is being created, that roughly 14 and a half acres of green space in the various parks, Paseos, and walkways. This is an aerial view of the green, the larger, roughly over two-acre park located on the western portion of the site. The purpose of this park is not only to serve the community, but also the residents, allowing them to be outside to enjoy the wonderful green space that will develop. There'll be tables, there'll be athletic equipment, there'll be jungle or playground equipment for children, et cetera. The whole idea is to create a community atmosphere here for people to go out and enjoy on a daily basis. This is another view of that same park space. The other thing which Martha touched on were the various multimodal access improvements that we're working to implement with the Midway Rising vision. The idea behind these improvements, as Martha discussed, it's to create a more walkable, transit-friendly space through the inner, the actual development itself, as well as the boundaries. And this is a view looking to the northwest with the entertainment center on the right side of the screen, and another view of the large square that we're developing outside of the entertainment center. We are very proud to conduct an economic study with the San Diego Regional EDC several months ago, and that economic study yielded some really profound results about the opportunities that we have in front of us with the Midway Rising project. When you look at, when you compare it to Comic-Con, Bio, and the Esri conferences, excuse me, the economic impact of what Midway Rising will deliver to San Diego represents all three of those conferences combined on an annual basis. We're also proud to have numerous partners that have supported us in our journey and that will look forward to collaborating with, not only in the development process, but in the operational aspects of what Midway Rising will be. With that, that concludes our presentation. And again, like I said, we have our entire project team here, and we are looking forward to questions and comments from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Kenton. You have a couple people seating time to you. Byron Weir. Nate Watkins. Okay, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Planning Commissioners and staff. My name is Kathy Kenton, and my family has operated businesses and owned property in the Midway community for 60 years. I currently serve as the Vice Chair of the Midway Pacific Highway Community Planning Group, and I'm excited to be here today. The last time I addressed you folks was at the adoption of our community plan in 2018. I've been a proud member of the planning group for many years, including the 11 years it took to complete our Midway Pacific Highway Community Plan update. Now with Midway Rising's project, we are finally able to bring our community's vision for a vibrant pedestrian and transit-oriented landmark entertainment destination forward. To put it simply, Midway Rising is the much-needed catalyst for change to our decades-long stagnant neighborhood. Day after day, year after year, we have seen the same strip clubs, the same industrial warehouses, the same commercial strip malls, and rotating homeless encampments. Now we have an incredible opportunity to bring the community plan to life with a new, modern 16,000-seat arena, a mixed-use entertainment district, 14 and a half acres of new parks and open space alongside 2,000 history-making affordable homes and thousands more market-rate homes. It is also important to note that Midway Rising has voluntarily limited the maximum height of residential buildings to 105 feet within the specific plan. Midway Rising has worked diligently with the planning group and taken our input and expressed goals to heart. That's why the Midway Planning Group voted unanimously to recommend approval of this process. We are excited to begin the revitalization of our neighborhood and create a brighter future for Midway, our neighboring communities, and all of San Diego. We are proud to support Midway Rising and urge you to recommend approval of this redevelopment to the full city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Fernanda Flores. You'll have one minute.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Fernanda Flores. I am the Political Director with the International Alliance of Theatrical and Stage Employees, Local 122. Since 1905, we've represented everything that has to do with live production in Southern California, including 1,500 stagehands in Coachella Valley and San Diego County. We are proud to support Midway Rising, and we are here to urge you to move this project forward. You've heard from the presentations of the incredible and like really this monumental project in our city and in our county. It'll bring in not only like a really comprehensive community benefits package, but also the hundreds of quality union jobs for local San Diegans, and I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Klaus. You'll have one minute.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Klaus. I'm the Executive Director of the San Diego Regional Center. San Diego Regional Center supports 47,000 individuals with developmental disabilities in San Diego and Imperial Counties. 15,000 of those are residents of the city of San Diego. Our partnership with Chelsea goes back well over a decade. You know, their commitment to affordable housing, including individuals with developmental disabilities and families, has been just a blessing. As a matter of fact, we have two grand openings occurring with 98 total units set aside within the city coming up in the next two weeks. So on behalf of the 47,000 individuals and families, we support our Board of Directors. We're asking for your support of this project to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bridget Browning. Okay. Marco Breones.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Marco Breones. I am the Political Director of the San Diego and Imperial Counties Labor Council. We proudly represent 200,000 working families and more than 130 unions in our region, many of which would proudly ply their trade on Midway. Midway Rising's commitment to labor and San Diego's working families is unparalleled. It offers the most job opportunities for thousands of our members, as well as delivering the most affordable homes for San Diego that we desperately need. As California's largest affordable housing project to date under the Surplus Lands Act, Midway Rising is poised to change the landscape for our region with respect to supplying workforce housing. The project will also bring much-needed infrastructure, multimodal transportation, connectivity, acres of parks, a world-class arena, and more than 4,000 homes for San Diegans from all backgrounds. It will positively impact the entire community for decades, provide good jobs with good wages, benefits for our working families, from construction to operation of the arena. This would generate economic benefits throughout our entire region. We urge your support for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Christian Carbajal.
Hello, good morning. Planning Commissioners, my name is Christian Carbajal. I'm speaking on behalf of Unite Here Local 30, the Hotel and Hospitality Workers Union in San Diego. We have supported Midway Rising from the beginning. Midway Rising will provide the most affordable homes and the most jobs for working families and the most parks, which will benefit us all, including everyone in this room. For Local 30, it provides a partnership opportunity with Legends, a premier entertainment and sports venue developer and operator at World Class Arena. Our members have not worked in these concessions at the Sports Arena for more than 20 years, and they are excited to return. And with 2,000 affordable homes, our members will have the opportunity to work in this amazing community. We urge you today to support Midway Rising. Thank you. Si se puede.
Thank you. Manny Rodriguez.
Good afternoon, Chair Modem and Planning Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of Ride SD. We're a nonprofit organization whose mission is to improve transportation in San Diego through public education, community events, and grassroots organizing. We put together the coalition letter with environmental and mobility organizations supporting this project, including Climate Action Campaign, Circulate San Diego, San Diego 350, and other organizations. The project will be great for many reasons, but we did have a request in that letter, and that is about the bus lanes, which we very much love that the project proposes bus lanes from Old Town Transit Center to the project site, which will make the bus the most competitive and fastest option to get from that point to the other and drive transit ridership incredibly high. However, the bus lanes are proposed for Phase 2, and we respectfully request that you approve the project with the bus lanes in Phase 1. We want to prove that transit can work, and it can already, it can benefit the existing arena as well. I tried taking the bus to the arena in its current state, and I had to get out of the bus and walk because the traffic was just so bad. So please approve the project, and please move the bus lanes to Phase 1. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sarah Mo Estrada.
Good morning, Planning Commissioners. My name is AJ Estrada, and send me with Jake Estrada, and I'm the Political Director for the San Diego County Building and Construction Trades Council. Our council is proud to represent 22 affiliated construction and trade unions, which includes more than 30,000 workers across San Diego County. I'm here to support the Midway Rising project and the action before you today. Midway Rising will create more than 8,000 new jobs, including thousands of construction jobs and permanent jobs in the hospitality sector. The creation of these jobs is critical, especially now as we head into a future that is uncertain. It's critical because those jobs provide certainty for our members and their families. But to be clear, that certainty doesn't just end with our affiliated unions. Our project labor agreements allow non-union contractors to participate in this work if they sign a letter of assent. they sign a letter of assent. We also allow the carpenters to sign on to our project labor agreements, the same way we allow our own affiliated unions to sign on. We're confident that any jurisdictional issues that may arise will be handled fairly. In fact, we're uninterested in anything that doesn't do that. So please support this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tracy Williams.
Good morning, Chair Moden, Vice Chair Boomenhauer, and fellow planning commissioners. My name is Tracy Williams. I am the president of the Board of Directors for Urban Corps of San Diego County, which is headquartered in the Midway District. For more than 35 years, we've been proud to support thousands of underserved, low-income adults by advancing career opportunities through education, life skills, and hands-on job training. As longstanding member of the Midway community, Urban Corps is proud to support this transformational project because it will help revitalize our stagnant and long-understirred neighborhood. We are extremely grateful for Midway Rising, their transparency, and willingness to present to organizations like us and keep us and share updates on the progress. This redevelopment will bring incredible economic benefits and thousands of job opportunities, which is an incredible opportunity for Corps members to find new career paths in construction and hospitality.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Zachary Kaufman.
Good morning, Chair Moden and planning commissioners. My name is Zach, and I'm with the YMB Democrats. We're a grassroots community that advocates for housing policies in support of more deed-restricted, affordable, and market-rate home building, especially near transit and job centers. We're proud to stand here today in support of the Midway Rising redevelopment. Midway Rising exemplifies everything that San Diego needs: a transit-oriented development with smart-growth principles as envisioned in the city's general plan and climate action plan. With this project, we'll be making California history by building 2,000 deed-restricted, affordable homes, along with thousands more market-rate homes. And what's more, this project is exactly what was envisioned in the Midway Community Plan, which prioritizes creating a pedestrian and transit-oriented landmark and entertainment destination at the site. The best use of our public lands is creating affordable homes for San Diegans that need it most, including families, seniors, veterans, and unsheltered individuals, and Midway Rising delivers. We strongly urge you to recommend approval for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelvin Barrios.
Good morning, planning commissioners. My name is Kelvin Barrios. I am the director of Government Affairs for the Labor's International Union of North America, Local 89, representing nearly 5,000 skilled construction laborers and their families in San Diego County. I'm here to express our strong support for Midway Rising. From the start, this project has partnered with working families. It has been, it will be union-built and union-operated, creating 8,500 jobs and generating over $7 billion in economic impact for our region. Construction will be done under a building trades project labor agreement, ensuring the work is completed on time, on budget, and with a qualified workforce. Midway Rising's commitment is unmatched, delivering affordable homes, a world-class arena, over 14 acres of parks, childcare, and community space while providing good union jobs. On behalf of Local 89 and our business manager, Valentin Macedo, I urge you to support Midway Rising today. Thank you.
Thank you. Keishan Patel.
Good morning. My name is Keishan Patel. I'm a Point Loma local and have grown up around the Midway area. Our Midway area has lacked the kind of development and investment the other parts of San Diego have seen. As the eighth-largest city in the country, San Diego should be leading, but too often we fall behind and get overlooked. I believe the Midway Rising project is a chance to change this, and as it will bring in new housing, parks, public spaces, along with a modern arena that will attract big events and entertainment. The Midway Planning Community Group has been on this with the city for 10 to 12 years and has been endorsed by the city for land use. When comparing our city to Los Angeles or San Francisco, who have their respective Kia Forum and Oracle Center, San Diego is the only city that does not have this sort of entertainment center. Along with the arena, the project will also create jobs, economic growth, and give the area the improvement it has needed for years. I strongly urge the improvement for Midway, and I urge you to support the Midway Rising project. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Paul.
Thank you for taking my time to listen to me this morning. I'm opposed to the project. I'm opposed to it for the following reason. SOMA has represented the city's San Diego preeminent entertainment venue. We've done that for 40 years. During that 40-year period, we have not had representation, we have not received a call or any whatsoever participation on the part of Zephyr, anybody associated. For 23 of those 40 years, SOMA has never had a lease. We have been pigeonholed into a position where we have no value on our business, and it's not fair. And I'm here for that reason. I'm not anti-development, but I am anti-fairness. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Paul. Okay. Thomas Mulaney.
Yes, hello. My name is Tom Mulaney. I represent a volunteer group called Livable San Diego. This project planned for 42 or 54 housing units weighed out about 10,000 residents. Using a common national standard of three to five acres per thousand, would need a minimum of 30 acres. We can see that it doesn't have enough park space because there's no soccer field, no baseball. I don't see any areas for skateboarding, just golf. Are there tennis or pickleball courts? Do the developers anticipate we're going to have 10,000 residents but not including any families? And how about no need for adult sports? What's counted as open space is largely just setbacks and sidewalks and space between buildings. Another very important factor is the upzoning madness going on. Now, this commission has seen community plans from Miramesa University City Uptown. Each of these plans has enough capacity to accommodate the forecast for the entire city, so I'd like you to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Allen.
Christopher Allen, Western State's Regional Council of Carpenters. I encourage you to table this item until Chelsea Development reevaluates their subcontractors of how they do business. Their subcontractors that they've used in the past have cheated workers, both in hour and wage violations, and I encourage you to empower people and change lives in San Diego. You should be protecting people as the planning commission before it even gets the shovel in the dirt. Thank you.
Thank you. Jorge Vieramontes.
Good morning, planning commissioners. My name is Jorge Vieramontes. I'm a representative with the Western State Regional Council of Carpenters. Chelsea Development, in front of the city council, on the dais, made a statement that they're going to do an intensive investigation on alter drywall. Some investigation they did. I have the document right here. The United States Department of Labor raided their office September 12, 2025, alter drywall, and found six labor law violations. And this is a subcontractor they want to use to build this beautiful building that we're talking about. What type of investigation is that? I have the document here. I'll pass it to you guys. I'm going to leave it with this.
...that we use regularly for drywall. We've got, I think, one contract for using Rockwell two or three years ago.
Right there, that stating that alter drywall, which Chelsea Development said they're going to do investigation, they're contracted to do that project. Let's do something about this, right? It's about building. Let's do it with the right contractors. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Kruger.
Thank you very much, Paul Kruger. I'm here today to urge you to please specifically discuss the transportation issue. You have a plan here that calls for 4,500 parking spaces for a building that will probably hold at least 8,000 people with vehicles. You're talking about overflow parking lots and shuttles. We have seen for the last five years the abject failure of any plan that involves public transit or bicycle lanes. When you talk about a walkable and rollable community, you're talking about the area in which these people will live. You are ignoring, if you refuse to discuss and acknowledge the transportation problems, the tens of thousands of San Diegans who need to transit through this. Most importantly, just think about when you drive west on the 8 and come to the Five Rose Crants off Fram, and how it backs up now. You'll be responsible for accidents and injuries if you don't. Please review the transit.
Thank you. We have a few online speakers.
Beginning with Jimena Villasenor Martinez, please unmute yourself.
Good morning, Chair Moden and commissioners. My name is Jimena Villasenor, policy advisor with the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce. The chamber advocates for policies that strengthen our international business community and makes San Diego the best place to live and work. That's why we're proud to support the Midway Rising, a historic project that would deliver 2,000 affordable homes, thousands more market-rate units, and new 16,000-seat arena in a vibrant mixed-use district. It will also generate tens of thousands of jobs, millions in new city revenue, and billions in regional economic impact. This is exactly the type of bold investment needed to revitalize one of our city's most underserved neighborhoods. On behalf of the chamber, we urge you to support and recommendation of Midway Rising to city council. Thank you.
Bill Dewitt.
Good morning, San Diego planning commissioners. My name is Bill Dewitt. I am the owner and creative director of California Wildales with locations in Ocean Beach and the Midway District. I also serve on the Midway Pacific Highway Community Planning Group. I'm here today to voice my strong support for Midway Rising. The Midway District has long been overlooked, too often seen as a rundown pass-through neighborhood. But just as Petco Park transformed the East Village and Liberty Station revitalized the Old Navy Base, Midway Rising can do the same thing here. This project delivers what San Diego needs most: thousands of new homes, nearly 15 acres of parks and open space, an exciting mixed-use district, and a modern 16,000-seat arena. As both a local business owner and a planning group board member, I urge you to move this project forward to city council so we can finally bring this neighborhood back to life. Thank you.
Nathan Kopp.
Good morning, planning commissioners. My name is Nathan Kopp. I am vice president of Sports San Diego and a Point Loma resident. We are a nonprofit organization dedicated to driving visitor demand to likely benefit the San Diego region through the recruitment and hosting of world-class sports events. Our work includes producing the Holiday Bowl, Rady Children's Invitational, California State Games, and attracting new events here such as the recently announced NASCAR Race on the Base and Coronado. We are excited to share our support for Midway Rising. This project will create a new 16,000-seat arena to replace a nearly 60-year-old outdated existing arena. And with this development, we have an incredible opportunity before us to attract never-seen-before sports and entertainment events to this area and continue to drive tourism to San Diego to support our city's second-largest industry. Please vote to recommend approval of this project and advance to city council. Thank you.
Marcus Helmer.
Hi, my name is Marcus Helmer. I am strongly in support of this project. San Diego desperately needs these homes, especially with the transit options available, and I urge you to support this project. Thank you.
Eduardo Velazquez.
Good morning, planning commissioners. My name is Eduardo Velazquez. I'm senior director of research and economic development with the San Diego Regional Economic Development Corporation. The EDC's mission is to maximize the region's economic prosperity and global competitiveness, and we do that in part by connecting data to decision-making. We had the opportunity to work with the Midway Rising Group to prepare a comprehensive economic and fiscal analysis. Through that analysis, we estimate that this project will create nearly 22,000 temporary construction jobs and over 3,000 permanent jobs once it's fully completed, as well as millions in tax revenue for the city and county of San Diego. All told, this project is estimated to contribute $285 million to the economy each year, $178 million of which would be net new to the region, which is equivalent to another Comic-Con having taken place here in San Diego each and every year. The project provides the investments that will contribute to the economic vitality of the region overall. We support it, and we ask you to support it as well. Thank you.
Akila Templeton. Please unmute yourself, Akila Templeton.
Good morning, Chair Moden and the San Diego Planning Commission. My name is Akila Templeton. I have the privilege of serving as president and CEO of Veterans Village of San Diego. Veterans Village of San Diego is among the largest nonprofit veteran service organizations in San Diego County. Every year, we serve thousands of veterans in overcoming homelessness and related challenges. We have a longstanding partnership with Chelsea Investment Corporation. Working together, we've been able to provide hundreds of veterans with affordable housing to help them overcome those challenges. We also happen to be a member of the Midway community. We are extremely proud to support Chelsea and the Midway Rising team in pursuit of this neighborhood revitalizing project that will make affordable housing history, and it will certainly uplift the entire neighborhood. On behalf of Veterans Village and the constituents we serve, we implore you to recommend approval of this project so that we can improve the lives of veterans and build a bright future for the Midway District. Thank you.
Jonathan Colapi. Please unmute yourself. Jonathan Colapi.
Good morning, Chair Moden and the San Diego planning commissioners. My name is Jonathan Colapi. I'm the executive director of the Ryan Family YMCA. For more than 50 years, Ry has proudly served the Midway, Point Loma, and Ocean Beach communities. I'm here today on behalf of the YMCA of San Diego County to voice our support for this exciting project. I'm proud to share that we've established a formal partnership with Midway Rising to provide childcare services onsite within the project's footprint. Guiding this partnership is a shared commitment towards fostering academic and cultural enrichment activities for early childhood and adolescent youth of the families that live and work onsite. This project is an amazing opportunity to uplift the Midway neighborhood. We strongly encourage the planning commission to recommend approval of this project to city council for their final consideration so that we may further our work in transforming the lives of the San Diego's youth. Thank you.
Denise Vedder, please unmute yourself.
Hi. I am Denise Vedder. I have lived in the Midway District for a very long time, and I'm also a member of the Midway Planning Group. And I also had a long career in government and public affairs. And so while every project isn't perfect, I do believe that the team that we've seen, they're there every month, listening to us, walking through the concerns, talking to the community. And so there's still a lot of issues to be worked out, but I think what's different than all the other speakers, I feel strongly about the commitment of the team of Chelsea Development and the whole team to work with us, to work on these tough issues. It's an area that was developed in the 60s when we couldn't have imagined what the Midway would become, and so I just want to show my support for the project and for continuing to work forward with this team and work on these issues so that it becomes a shining star of what that region can be. Thank you. Thank you.
Imran Jaffer, you have one minute. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, Planning Commissioner and Chair Modine. My name is Imran Jaffer, and I own a family-owned construction business here. I support the Midway Rising project because it's going to be an incredible job creator for our city and the entire San Diego region. Last month, San Diego Regional EDC released an economic analysis that deep dives into the incredible impacts of this project that it'll have for San Diego. We'll be able to create close to 22,000 union jobs and hopefully also open up opportunities for small businesses like myself to also participate as a sub. That translates into about $1.6 billion in wages for hard-working San Diegan families, and this project will create another 3,100 additional jobs after it is built, just like Petco Park has transformed East Village. This project will also be a key to transforming the Midway neighborhood. Thank you, and let's get this project going.
Aiden, please unmute yourself. You have one minute.
Good morning. I'm a resident of San Diego and--
Excuse me, sir. Can you please state your last name for the record as well, please?
My name is Adion Chattery. I live in San Diego, and I go to the sports arena for events sometimes, and I think that this is a great project and this should be approved with no delay. This will provide thousands of units that we desperately need, as well as a brand-new arena and entertainment center that will provide much more opportunities for entertainment in San Diego. I would like to, I agree with what the person, what someone said earlier about expediting the bus lanes to Phase One, because as it is, the traffic's already very bad in the area, so introducing high-capacity transit would greatly improve the options to get to the arena. Thank you.
Alana Martenson.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Alana Martenson, and I'm the Government Relations Manager at Serving Seniors. Since 1970, Serving Seniors has been the leading provider of wraparound services to meet the needs of low-income seniors in the county. And for 20 years, we've worked in partnership with Chelsea to open five affordable housing sites, but every time we open a new affordable housing complex, the interest list is in the thousands. We hear stories all the time about the need for affordable housing. I recently spoke to a senior whose rent doubled when a new landlord bought her building. The senior worked her whole life as an engineer and still cannot afford to live and retire in San Diego. Luckily, she learned about our Paul Downey senior residence and was able to be approved as a tenant and stay in her neighborhood. However, I can't help but think of the thousands of seniors who sit on waiting lists. Our city is in desperate need for housing, which is why we are proud to support Chelsea and Midway Rising in their commitment to delivering 2,000 affordable homes. Please support approval of this project to San Diego City Council so we can start to build these homes as soon as possible. Thank you.
Our last speaker does not have a name. It's listed as iPhone. Please state your full name for the record. Since we are not hearing any discussion, that concludes public comment.
We can move on to Commission Comment. Vice Chair Blumhauer.
Thank you, Chair Modine, and I want to first off thank Martha Blake and all the staff that put together the presentation, the staff report, and the environmental review. It was, as always, incredibly thorough. So I agree with several of the speakers that have said that this project's going to join Petco Park, Liberty Station, and I'm going to add in SDSU West as iconic projects that are going to greatly improve both the sites of the development and also anchor transformation of the surrounding neighborhoods. Leaving this neighborhood as is is unacceptable, which is why I've been pretty consistently supportive of the community plan update, which envisioned changing this site and improving it, the removal of the height limits in this neighborhood, and why I'm supportive of this project. I think it's important to note that there are notable public benefits that are going to accrue to the city with this project: 4,200 needed housing units, 2,000 of which are affordable. At a level, by the way, that oftentimes we hear people who are opposed to development or question why we're adding capacity for development in areas, they question it based on the affordability of the housing, and here, just under half of these units are going to be affordable at the level that I think is going to be very useful for working families. I really appreciate how the parks and open space are integrated into the project design. I like that the development agreement includes money set aside for making improvements to Fire Station 20, because it's already a busy house, and that's going to be important as this neighborhood continues to grow and densify. And I like and appreciate how thoughtful the transit and right-of-way improvements are around this site and connecting it back to Old Town Transit. I also appreciate the integration of the historic importance of the site, both the notable acts and athletes that have been there, but also the community. I think that existed on this site prior to the sports arena redevelopment of this site. I think that the Historic Resource Board did a very good job of analyzing that, and I understand why they approved it, because I think that's a good way of balancing redevelopment of this site while recognizing the important history that occurred there. I also do have some concerns about the transit connections to the Old Town Transit Center. I think these are going to be alleviated with the express bus lanes, but I think those should be included in Phase One. I thought that before it was brought up. I think it even more now. And I just want to note that I think the concerns that are being raised about a lack of park space associated with this development are flawed simply because Mission Bay Park and the athletic fields at Rob Field are so close to this development. I think this area is well-served by park space. So I am prepared to move staff's recommendation with the change that Development Agreement PMT 3373554 be modified to require the transit improvements being included in Phase One of the project. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Commissioner Reeves.
You, Chair Modine. I just have a few questions, and I'm going to just start by apologizing because this was a very big document dump, and we've had a couple of weeks with it, especially the SEQUA stuff, but I may have missed some things. So if I'm asking a question that was already provided in the backup materials, please just let me know. But I think I'll start by, sort of in the vein of Vice Chair Blumhauer, is the applicant amenable to moving the bus lanes to Phase One, or is that something you'd be supportive of? Please.
Good morning, Ryan Harrell, Executive with Zephyr, a partner of Midway Rising. Commissioners, thank you for having us here. To answer that question, I don't think it's as simple as saying yes or no right here on the spot. The city and our staff have some amazing traffic engineers who have worked on this. The fact that it's divided up the way it is today, I believe, would have a purpose, but it's something that our team is fully, would commit to investigating further.
That works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, just a clarification. Can we confirm whether or not the SAFER letter was withdrawn and their opposition withdrawn, as is stated in the Allen Mackens letter?
That is the message I received today.
Is that--
I believe a representative from Allen Mackens is here.
I trust that the Allen Mackens letter was accurate. I see Heather coming up, but yeah, I don't know if the person from SAFER here doesn't look like it.
Heather Riley with Allen Mackens. It's my information that I received yesterday that it was intended to be withdrawn. I don't know if a formal written withdrawal was submitted or not. However, it remains in the record, so that is why we did provide the response.
Understood. Thank you. Okay, I'll make this quick. Just a couple more clarifications. I'm curious, is the shuttle that's proposed to the Old Town Transit Center, is that solely to mitigate VMT, or is that shuttle also allowing for there to be a reduction of parking provision in the project?
I would ask Megan Liskow, our Transportation Engineer, to speak.
Megan Liskow, Transportation Development. That shuttle is for a reduction of VMT.
Okay, so is there a reduction in parking being provided? Is that already managed through the entitlements?
The project is located within a TPA, and therefore there is zero parking required for the site.
That makes sense. Thank you. Regardless, parking is being required. I'm sorry, parking is being provided, and my question was to the applicant, how many parking spaces for the, or I guess to staff, how many parking spaces are being provided for event usage?
2,100 parking spaces.
2,100, okay.
For the entertainment--
Of the 7,000-plus total parking being provided? For the park and open space, the-- the development agreement provides for maintenance and operation of that by the applicant. Is that inclusive of security? And is that security if there is security provided 24 hours a day in the parks? Looks like I'm seeing nodding heads. Great. That was an affirmative for the record. And then, last question. The sign plan, there's not a comprehensive sign plan yet, correct? But there will be one submitted eventually?
In the specific plan, there is an Appendix B--
Right.
--that provides the sign guidelines, so--
So my question was, you got me. The question was, is the Appendix B going to, is the comprehensive sign plan that comes forward going to be identical to Appendix B?
The Appendix B will guide the sign development on the site without a comprehensive sign plan unless one is required in the future.
Okay. And the appendix did not, or at least I didn't see anything specific to off-site advertising, so does that mean the area will be subject to the citywide sign regulations and prohibition of off-site advertising? Or will that be--
I'm going to ask Crystal Phelan with our LVR Planning to speak to some of those details.
I'm going to do a switcheroo on you. I'm Keely Halti.
I saw that.
Also, DSC though. Hi. Nothing in the land use items before you today would alter the applicability of those regulations. There are deviations that would be allowed through a comprehensive sign plan issued by our department would have to be consistent with the provisions of Appendix B.
That answers my question. Thank you. So that's it for my clarifying questions. I'll just, I want to say thank you, staff. I know this has been a long time coming. A lot of work has gone into this, so thank you for all your time on this. Thank you to the applicant team, all of you who are here, for the thought and time that's gone into this project. And I especially thank you to the public for coming out, making your voices heard. It's a big project. It's exciting for some, it's scary for others. I totally understand sort of both sides of that, and it's important that people come out and participate in the process. So thank you for those of you who have taken the time and to those who sent in letters. From a high level, I believe I would agree with my colleague. This project achieves the goals asserted when the city issued an RFP for the site. I find it exciting, frankly. I think that it's a vast improvement. Is it perfect? Probably not, but what is, right? The ongoing underutilization of this site and vast parking lot and outdated arena certainly are not perfect, so by comparison, this is a huge improvement. You know, I said this, but I want to say it again. I recognize and understand the concerns of the community, especially those in neighboring communities who will see this every day, drive past it every day. I also recognize the state of the community, the drastic need to do something different here, to create a center of gravity for the community that will allow it to become a net contributor to our city, to the city's cultural vitality, and to, importantly, to our housing stock, rather than what it is today, which doesn't contribute much. And I'm excited to see this proposal, which has a lot going for it, come forward. But beyond all of that, it's not necessarily our job to make policy recommendations here. We're evaluating this project from a discretionary land use perspective and basing it on findings of evidence presented, and I'm comfortable with what's been presented by the applicant, by staff. I believe it meets the requirements in the municipal code and the SEQUA findings, et cetera. So I will second Vice Chair Blumhauer's motion and yield back.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Renger.
Yeah, thanks for all the work that's been put into preparing these documents and presenting it to us. I have to admit, with every speaker that came up, I was like, yeah, that's a great point. And in opposition, I was like, yeah, that's valid too. And it's because, as a planning commissioner, I see the greater vision of what this plan provides, the community. As a resident of San Diego and as one who has experienced the traffic that backs up on the Five, as you enter Rosecrans and other areas, I sympathize, right, with all of that. So that's the position I feel like I'm always in. I did have a clarifying question, though. I'm wondering, what is the timeline? And you may not have this quite yet, but what is the timeline for the proposed Phase One versus Phase Two of the developments?
Commissioner, thank you for the question. From a proposed timeline perspective, we are expecting to continue to hopefully move through the approval process in a positive manner. From there, we would anticipate anywhere from 12 to 18 months for design and site development permitting processes, and then enter into Phase One, which would be the new entertainment center, along with some of the park space and residential development coming online in Phase One. In order to move into Phase Two, which Martha showed in that previous presentation, the western half of the site, we need to have the new entertainment center up and running in order for us to apply for the demolition permit associated with the old. So from a timeline standpoint, we still have a fair amount of time in front of us to start the actual construction process, but we're excited at the opportunity in front of us.
So basically, you have to finish Phase One before you initiate Phase Two or start building.
Effectively, when you look at the two components of the site in that one visual, the eastern half compared to the western half, in order to unlock the site for its full development potential, we have to be in a position where we can take down the existing sports arena, and in order to do that, we need to have the new one operational.
And if you could just stay there for a second. What percentage of the housing that we're talking about, the 42-plus-hundred-stock units, will be provided in Phase One as opposed to Phase Two?
So those specifics have not yet been-- So those specifics have not yet been exactly determined. But as part of not only the development agreement and then the ongoing lease negotiations we're having with the city, it will specify the requirements that we'll need to hit, um, in order to ensure that we're moving through the process in those phases in a timely manner.
Yeah. So I, and then thirdly, it's a lot of the comments here. We're talking about, um, a 200-foot height, um, development as opposed to the 100-foot that was agreed upon. Is that accurate?
So I'm not sure I understand the question, but I'll try to, uh, answer it appropriately. The specific plan is setting the height requirements for the various components of the development, be it whether the entertainment center or the, uh, residential towers or the mixed-use towers. None of those contemplate that 200-plus height limit that was, um, conveyed in some of the comments that you received.
That's, that's what I wanted to confirm. So here's what I would say. You know, a lot of the accolades for the project are based on the providing of much-needed housing in San Diego. And that's why I was asking about what number is going to be provided in phase one, right? And I trust 100% that, you know, you're not going to just build this entertainment center and, and not, you know, move on with phase two. But having said that, I think the accolades have to do with the providing of much-needed housing. So therefore, that's why I asked the question about how, how many units will be provided in, in phase one. And then, um, secondly, I'm, you know, traffic obviously is a concern. And as others have, um, stated, the, you know, transit-oriented development is honestly only successful if there is a whole system of buses and, and trolley, ways and, and also ridership, right? Just because you build it doesn't necessarily mean that they will ride it. And, um, I think that's why, that was a very pertinent question or recommendation. And, and I, I recognize you said there's, you know, there's a lot smarter people who are looking at this, uh, transportation engineers and so forth, um, talking about providing that shuttle in phase two as opposed to phase one. But I think, given that the entertainment center is happening in phase one, I think it's going to be pertinent to have that, um, rapid shuttle or bus connection to the trolley station. If you're talking about 20, did you say 2,100 parking spaces for the venue out of the 7,100? And this is a 16,000-seat venue. I mean, I feel like there's a huge delta. And so ridership of the trolley and transit is going to be totally necessary, right? So I would, um, I, I, that's my comment. I, I don't know how, you know, how to make sure that that happens, but, uh, I mean, I would, I, I think ultimately the positives outweigh the challenges, um, for this development. And I would be in support of this project, understanding that, I think transportation really needs to be looked at and, um, ridership encouraged. And how do we do that? By providing a, a very, you know, uh, it, it has to be, riding the trolley and taking public transit to the site needs to be more comfortable than sitting in traffic and, and fighting traffic and, and not have, not finding parking, right? So I'd like to encourage really moving that to phase one as much as possible.
Now, I'll, I'll just state for the record, you know, as we have done in the past, over the past two and a half, three-plus years, working with city staff and our development team, we will remain committed to working through these solutions, uh, working towards these solutions, not only in this development phase, but even as we get into operations as well. So we look forward to the partnership and collaboration there.
Hi, Commissioners, my name is Diego Velasco. I'm with City Thinkers. We assisted with a specific plan. I wanted to make a clarifying response to your question, Commissioner Renger, about the height. So Shelby was right that the development proposal does not anticipate heights exceeding 105 feet for the residential buildings and 165 feet for the entertainment center. The specific plan does include an SDR number seven, page 45, an allowance for up to 10% of the site to include a building that would reach as, as much as a maximum of 250 feet. I think it's important to distinguish between the development proposal and the specific plan. The development proposal is what we believe we can, can be built today. The specific plan is a long-range planning document that will survive the development. It is your document. It's the city's document. And it needs to be forward-thinking and visionary. And so we included that provision to allow for some flexibility, recognizing this is a 30-year vision. And none of us will know what will happen in 30 years. So we're just encouraging to think bold and be visionary and really distinguish the two things. The specific plan is a long-range vision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mazari?
Yeah, I also wanted to thank staff and applicant for, um, all their hard work on this. I have a couple of, uh, transportation questions. Uh, I wanted to know if the Navoar was, um, considered as a cumulative project in the traffic analysis?
Megan Liskow, Transportation Development. Yes, the Navoar was considered in both the local mobility analysis as well as the VMT analysis.
Okay, great.
Yes.
And, oh, I have one more question. The mitigations, are they tied to ADTs, to units, uh, phase one, phase two? How are the mitigations happening, the transportation specifically?
Each ones of the mitigations are tied to the lifetime of both the entertainment center as well as the commercial land use.
So the schedule of how they're happening is not tied to ADT or the units?
Correct. They're tied to the land use because they're mitigating the VMT from that land use.
Okay, so there's no specifics of when a specific mitigation will happen?
When that land use comes online is when the mitigation is to be implemented.
Okay, and as far as the 26 unmitigated impacts with the EIR? Were those, um, considered, I'm sure they were considered in the traffic study in the EIR, but was it considered in the whole of the community plan, what impacts they might, there might be of?
The significant impacts for this project were identified under VMT. Which impacts are you referring to of the 26 impacts?
I didn't review the traffic study, but in the, in the documents, they said there's 26 unmitigated impacts. So I was just wondering that if they were actually 26 unmitigated impacts under the traffic study that you analyzed or are impacts mitigated?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so if you're referring to the CPU for Midway Rising, or I'm sorry, for the Midway Pacific Highway Community, that CPU was provided, uh, prepared or the transportation impact study was prepared using level of service. And that identified, um, uh, roadways and intersection segments. This local mobility analysis uses SB 743, which uses VMT as a level of significance. So we use the VMT impact. It's a little bit of an apples-to-oranges comparison.
Yeah.
So the local mobility analysis identified, uh, transportation, um, effects. And then the project provided project improvements to address those effects. But it's not the same as a significant and, uh, impact.
Okay, I just wanted that on the record.
Of course.
I understand.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marlborough?
Thank you, Chair. And staff, thank you for your report. I know that work was tough. And I also want to reach out to the community planning group involved because I know that was not an easy process. And you, you did a great job in that. One of the public comments, and it's caught almost everybody here about the bus stop in phase one. And so I'm not going to repeat that, but I'm just going to remind you that, uh, one of the successes for the redevelopment downtown had a lot to do with its robust, public transportation. And that's very important for your other phases moving on. So, and I know it's kind of tough because you have to deal with transit on that. It's that you just can't make them do that. But if, if we want this to be successful, public transportation has to move with it to, to make that success. I just had a question, and I appreciate the, um, the development agreement with, uh, regarding Fire Station 20. But I'd like to know, what is that upgrade? Is there any plans in place or ideas that are going to come across?
I don't know that fire, the fire department has developed a specific, you know, development plan if it would involve simple upgrades or wholesale redevelopment of the site.
Yeah, um, you know, I'm good. I'm, I'm happy with it. And I, I just hope it's not a facelift of the station because what that area is going to need is a more robust public, uh, response for emergencies. That's what I'm looking for. And 2.5 million is not probably enough, but I just hope they're looking at that. And our message to the fire chief, be aggressive on asking what you need for that area because that's a lot of folks that you're going to have to service. It's not just fires. It's medical responses as well, especially with the entertainment center. So please be very aggressive on that. I'm really happy about the 2,000 affordable units. Uh, I'm really excited about that. It's great. That's going into a higher resource area. That's going to be tremendous for the folks who will be able to afford to live there. And pretty much that's it. I don't want to take too much time. I'm very much in support of this and thank you all for the hard work.
Thank you. I share the sentiment of my fellow commissioners. I'm excited about this project. I love that it has kind of a holistic development. I also share the traffic concerns. Um, and I have some questions, um, regarding the current sports arena and then the future. How many parking spaces are, are currently, um, dedicated to the current sports arena?
I don't know if I know the full count. I think, I don't know if Megan's looking it up right now or if the applicant team knows. As we know from driving by, it's quite a few.
Yeah.
Currently, the existing Pachanga Sports Arena operates with roughly about 3,700 parking stalls.
Okay, and what is the seat capacity of the sports arena currently?
Give or take, it's roughly around, uh, 14,000, depending on the configuration of the type of event.
Okay, so we're increasing the seats and decreasing the parking. And I, I understand it's in a TPA and I understand there's going to be a shuttle service. My, my next question is, will the shuttle service be able to use a dedicated bus lane so that they're not stuck in traffic, obviously?
That is the intent.
Okay, and how frequent are these shuttles going to be during an event, I guess?
It depends on the capacity of the event. I think there's three different thresholds we have based off of the size of the event. And as the size of the event increases, the frequency and the number of shuttles will increase.
Okay. I think the shuttle service is ambitious. Uh, I don't know if I would use it. I'm just going to be totally honest with you. But, um, I'm, I'm glad to see that there's trying to be a solution. Will the parking that's dedicated, the 2,100 spaces, um, will that be like a reciprocal agreement so that the housing can use it or parks or, you know, people visiting, um, retail or whatever, not during an event?
So just to clarify, will the 2,100 spaces be available on non-event points and times?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. How are you going to manage that when there is an event, uh, to ensure that, that the parking is available?
Certainly. So our, our goal is, and from an operational standpoint, is to implement new measures in terms of how we are educating our guests to not only where they park, but how they come to the Midway Rising development. So there'll be, um, for lack of a better term, a bit of a learning curve as we get things going. But our operational standards will increase so that we'll be able to not only educate folks, but direct them exactly to where they need to be. Basically implementing efforts to do as much pre-purchasing of parking before coming to events. So people aren't necessarily showing up on the doorstep trying to figure out where to go. So a lot of that will be in an educational process as we bring that new venue online and what we're communicating to the patrons that are attending it.
Okay. I think my last comment is, I actually really appreciated, um, well, public comment in, in general, but, um, the one gentleman that talked about, uh, the lack of sport courts within the parks. I'm not going to condition, you know, in anything in this, but I would highly recommend you look at, um, having some kind of facility, um, for the residents and maybe the broader public, whether that's a pickleball court, we, you can generate revenue off of that, or other sport, um, opportunities. With the amount of parks, I think it would be a, a nice advantage for the community. We have a motion. I'm going to ask Vice Chair Boomhauer if you can restate what the amendment or the modification is. I, I have require the transit improvement in phase one. Is that, can you confirm?
Sure. So my motion was, uh, to move staff's recommendation with development agreement number PMT 3373554 being modified to require the transit improvements be included in phase one of the project.
Okay, and we have a second for that, so. Commissioner Mazari?
No, thank you.
Okay, we can, uh, go to a vote, I believe. And that passes unanimously. Congratulations and thank you, staff. You did a great job and that adjourns our meeting for today.